Everybody, uh, all meetings are over. We're going to go straight into telecommunications with number one discussion and possible action regarding the proposed order in docket number 2021 UA 053 Windstream Communications LLC. Application for designation as an eligible telecommunications carrier, Ms. Denmark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Windstream was a winning bidder in the FCC auction 904 Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. Windstream Communications is a wholly owned subsidiary of Windstream Services LLC along with Windstream Mississippi that already exists as an ILEC and an ETC in the state of Mississippi. However, due to the location of their ARDOF census blocks, the company decided to move forward with this application for a new ETC designation and CPCN to serve the award areas. Windstream was awarded $12,638,681 support over 10 years for 5,733 locations and 824 census blocks. And Windstream proposes to provide the service via fiber. Data requests were propounded by the staff and responses were received on May 18th, 2021. Staff has reviewed the petition and recommends approval.
Okay. I couldn't hear the last part of that, but I'm assuming we stopped?
Yes, sir. We recommend approval.
I apologize. I just can't hear that well on the phone, but do I have a motion then?
So move second.
All the papers send to five percent nine. Okay, we'll go to number two then. Discussion and possible action regarding the proposed order in docket number 2018 UA 224 Aristotle Unified Communications LLC application for designation as an eligible telecommunications carrier. Ms. Denmark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Aristotle was originally designated as an ETC in 2018 following FCC auction 903, which was the Connect America Fund. Aristotle was subsequently awarded funding in the ARDOF auction this year and seeks to expand their designation area to include the ARDOF award areas. Aristotle was awarded just over $27 million support over 10 years for 7,400 locations and 1,661 census blocks. Data requests were propounded by the staff and the responses were received by the staff on May 19th, 2021. Staff reviewed the petition and recommends approval.
I got a question, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, anybody got any questions?
I do, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Denmark, Aristotle is bid, as I understand from your email this morning, as a gigabit in the gigabit tier for the ARDOF, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And they're, and they're planning to offer broadband in, and I'm bringing this up because three of the six counties that their census blocks in are mine and are counties in which broadband is extremely scarce and are in counties where the rural electric co-op is elected not to provide broadband, unfortunately. I got big concerns with the idea or the issue, as I understand it from your email this morning, that they would be providing as a fixed wireless provider at gigabit tiers.
Yes, sir.
Or a gigabit service. Is it the staff's position that a fixed wireless provider can provide gigabit service?
Commissioner, we don't make any statement on whether or not the technology is capable. We have asked the question on our NARUC phone calls with representatives from the FCC of what, how we do, what's the word I'm looking for? How we do make sure every year when we're making these ETC certifications that the customers do in fact not only have access to the service speed tier that was bid on and awarded by the FCC, but also that customers are able to purchase that. You know, there's, it's one thing to say, yes, a service is available in the census block. It's another thing entirely to say a gigabit service is available and being purchased in that census block. So we've definitely understand your concern and we are waiting on more guidance from the FCC level on how we enforce that and make sure.
I guess my question centered on the fact that there are other ETCs that are filed for application that the commission has not taken up based upon conversations with the staff and the recommendation from the staff. We don't take them up because the FCC has yet to grant ETC designations in other states in America related to that, that are in the same nature of Aristotle.
Understood.
With the same issues related to the offerings using the same technology.
I completely understand.
I guess my question is, why would we take up Aristotle if the position is that we're going to take up fixed wireless providers and say that they can offer a gig? We either take them all up or we don't take them all up. And y'all's recommendation has been heretofore on others to not take those up.
Our recommendation today was based on the fact that this company is already designated as an ETC. And so the recommendation today was just to expand their service territory to increase their census blocks in their designation. They've not sought a new designation under a new entity, but we certainly understand the logic and I agree with the logic. So if we want to hold on this until the FCC does complete their review, we are, we support that.
Does Aristotle have filings before the FCC for ETC designation in other states?
I am not entirely certain. I know that they are a regional carrier with, I think maybe just Arkansas and Mississippi, but we can get that information to you later today.
I mean, I understand the deadline we're under and I understand, I understand why we're here on the third and we're not taking them up on the eighth.
Well, Commissioner, I will say that Aristotle was very late to file their petition to expand their ETC designation area. You know, the FCC stipulated.
Any of y'all are representative of Aristotle? Who is Aristotle?
Robert Wise is their regional, or is their Mississippi council, but it's Thomas Roland for Aristotle that we've primarily contacted. I reached out to them several times between January and April, asking when they would be making their filing, but they still failed to make the filing until April. So there's not a sense of urgency. We just, we knew that we had done a thorough review of the Windstream application and because this was a, an expansion, not a new petition, we.
And I appreciate that, but honestly, it's different. I mean, because we could give, we've got companies that are ETCs for lifeline providers and just because they're a lifeline provider doesn't mean we're going to give them an ETC designation to be an ARDOF provider. And the fact that Aristotle was an ETC under a program that required 10-1, which a fixed wireless carrier can do, I don't personally think that, I think that's a totally different ballgame than giving them this many millions of federal dollars to go out and put into technology that in every other case that we've dealt with, with this, we've, y'all yourself, the public utility staff themselves have recommended that we hold those up. And, and I'm, you know, as I understand the ETC, as I understand the federal rules and the, and the 180 days, Mr. Hammond, you may have to help us with this. If, if the commission is not designated a carrier by June the fifth, excuse me, the seventh, what then, that, that bars what? That has, that has what adverse effect to the carrier?
Same, you may need to help me. My understanding is that they would, they would, they would lose their money and the money would revert back to the pot, that their, their clock would have run out on them.
Is that in fact the case?
So what Audra McDonald from the FCC told us last week on a call was that that June 7th deadline is being taken seriously by the FCC and absent a waiver to extend time to receive a certification, that is true.
But Aristotle in this case could seek a waiver from the FCC for extension of time to get their ETC designation in Mississippi or Arkansas.
They could not because they have missed, they missed that January 7th, 2021 deadline to file their petition. So, you know, we had 22 petitions for new ETC designation in front of us this year. All of those absent the Windstream and Aristotle petitions that are in front of you today were made by that January 7th deadline. And Audra said last week that they are taking that deadline very seriously.
So what you're saying is that Aristotle and Windstream did not file by January the 7th?
Correct.
And, and because of that, that's what started the clock ticking that runs them to a June the 7th deadline.
Well, ideally, they wanted everybody there, but yes, these, these are the two carriers.
And the other, the other carriers that we have yet to rule on, specifically Starlink, SpaceX, and a couple of others, met that January deadline. Therefore, they're not under the gun, for lack of a better term, they're not under the scrutiny of that, of that period, right? I just want to get that right in my mind.
Yes, sir. They are able to apply for a waiver and an extension of time.
So essentially what we're dealing with here is two carriers that if we don't act today or don't act by the 7th, they would lose this money.
That's our understanding.
In the, in the ARDOF auction, which would then, I, I want to, I mean, I don't, I don't understand the staff's difference in recommendation on other carriers. And I don't like being in a position where we're, if our position or the staff's position is that fixed wireless carriers bidding in a gigabit tier have to make a gigabit offering. Common logic tells you if you're going to offer a gigabit, you got to be able to deliver a gigabit. That's just it. Got to be able to do that if you're going to publicly say you're going to sell it. Our job as guardians of this fund and, and is to make sure they can do that. So, I mean, I, I'm hesitant to go along with your recommendation. I understand the logic and why to do it and, and, and may do that, but how can we, and maybe y'all can speak to this, how can, if the commission gives these two, set Windstream aside, nobody's arguing whether fiber can deliver a gig. That, that horse has left the barn. What can, what is your recommendation we do if the commission votes today? And I'm prepared to support that. I mean, I don't want to keep somebody from, in Co-Home Equipment Tunica County that I represent or any of the other three counties that Commissioner Bailey represents from getting broadband if they can get it, but I don't want them lied to and I don't want to be an accomplice in them being lied to. And I don't want to be an accomplice in the same thing we've seen with a certain other carrier with all these promises that fixed wireless is going to be so wonderful and it's not. And I don't want to be up here supporting that if in fact the case is that six months down the road, Ms. Jones in, in, in Marks, Mississippi, in Quipman County signs up and she needs a gig and they say, oh, sorry, we can't deliver a gig, deliver a gig. Those are the questions ought to be answered on the front end before government gives a sanction to take free money to go do it. So what, what's y'all's suggestion as to what we do in that situation? Because y'all are recommending to us to approve this. So what do you recommend we do as we deal with the fact that they, we don't know whether they're going to be able to deliver this?
Essentially following the guidance from the FCC, waiting on them to rule that they allow them to get to this point. And so that's, that's essentially the difference right now. We're happy to draw our recommendations.
Well, I'm not saying, I mean, you've already made it. So I don't know, I mean, how we do, how we do with that? Y'all say we ought to approve it and we're here today to vote on it. We got four days to deal with it. I'm trying to understand if we vote and go with what you've asked us to do and we follow your guidance and we follow your recommendation and this thorough review that's, that's going on in here, if we do that, then how, what, what at the, what, what extraordinary steps should we condition this order on? Are there things that the order can be conditioned on, their ETC designation be conditioned on, that ensures that we can pull that? There, there should be a higher standard. I mean, y'all said, sitting here today, you don't know whether they can deliver it and yet we're going to be giving them authority to go do it. I'm just saying if we, y'all recommended we do it. If we take your recommendation and, and I have, are there ways to get something in that order that, Mr. Hammond, that triggers some type of special review based upon the fact that this carrier, that, that fixed wireless and they bid into a gig tier?
Yeah, Commissioner, I think one of.
Some sort of monthly report process and in these type of special circumstances, we should require from these carriers? Above and beyond what we know that the staff could tell us today that they can deliver?
Are you referring to these carriers or this carrier?
This carrier.
This, this carrier.
So a provision could be added to this order that could implement some kind of reporting
as it relates to the quality of the service offering designed around what their networks operate under, right? And I, in my opinion, once you get to that annual certification mechanism, if based off of what occurs in the other proceedings, both at the FCC and the commission designed around these types of networks, the commission would then be in a place to say that they would not meet the requirements of the ARDOF, thus not releasing the funds, thus not certifying to the FCC and the USAC that they're, that they're not meeting the requirements.
Right. All right. But the issue then becomes with that, you're 16, 15 months past that point. So if you don't do annual certifications to the end of, of September.
Okay.
If, if the commission releases this ET, and I see Director Doty came in and she'd like to comment on this, would be glad to hear from her what, we've got plenty of, I've got some questions about this process. But once that is done, if, if the commission does not condition this ETC designation today in a manner that protects the integrity of that fund, you know, the staff knows, I know that we have gone through this rigamarole for a year or more related to this specific type of technology and whether or not it can deliver. Secondly, if we give this ETC designation today, they're automatically within 60 days able to access federal dollars for a product line. Ms. Jones, Ms. Smith, Ms. Hammond in Marks, Mississippi calls and wants to get fixed wireless at a gig speed. We've just been told that there's questions and everybody recognizes that as to whether that can be done or not. We know before we vote today that there's a chance that may not can be done. So, I mean, what are y'all asking us to do here? Just dig a hole deeper or what?
I think to the last thing you just said, a provision could be initiated because the commission has at all point reserves the right to initiate proceedings to revoke an ETC designation for the exact failures that you just described.
Okay, but there's no difference in that than, than the other 21 we, we, I mean, if it's Tom Bigby Fiber that everybody knows can deliver a gig. We don't have a problem with that. We know that they can deliver it. There's no question as to whether that technology can. I mean, that same right exists on a fiber company right now. What do you do above and beyond conditioning a certain order on one where you know the bid has been made into the auction to say we can offer a gig? And everybody that's sitting in this room has said and on the record that we don't think , know if they can. I'm just not trying, I don't want to throw good money after bad. Understand the position that we're in, understand why we've got this on the agenda today. I get all of that. I get all of that. I'm just asking, is there something that can make it extraordinary, an extraordinary step based upon what we know and what has been said today? Are the problems with this technology that we take a closer look at that and that the commission look at that or the staff look at that every 60 days based upon how many people applied for gig service? This would be a good start. I'll think this up on the, on the bench for us here. That if everybody that applies for a gig service, how many of those people have been able to, in fact, did the company test the speeds they were receiving? Were there complaints related to the gig service? How many people applied for gig speeds? Where are those people? I mean, I, I can, you know, I would have hoped this would have been done prior to us getting here, but I can think this up on the bench if we need it to be, but I think that would be something in the, in the realm of what we're looking for here is something to be a trigger that we don't get in the position that everybody sitting within this bar has seen evidence of exists. And, and so what, what's, what's the solution?
Well, in this particular situation, Aristotle's ETC certification does come up for recertification this September, so we're not looking at 16 months. They have by July 1st of this year to file their certifications for this year. So it could be that we take the time and the review process of their certification for this calendar year to clarify some of those points and put some of that into effect.
Specific to ARDOF?
Mm-hmm.
Not specific to their?
Well, their ETC designation is their ETC designation. So we will recertify that they are an ETC again in September of this year.
Well, if, if there's ETC certification, there's ETC certification, why are we here?
To expand the census blocks in which they are designated, but if we, if we do not approve this, they'll still be an ETC for CAF II purposes. They just will not receive the funding in those specific census blocks. We could, if we are unsatisfied this year, fail to recertify them or fail to recertify them in certain census blocks.
But I mean, Ms. Denmark, you're aware of the issues related to fixed wireless?
Yes, sir.
And, and you've said. And, and you've said earlier today, or intimated, the questions related to whether a fixed wireless carrier can provide a gigabit speed?
Yes, sir.
And so this is, you know, we're not trying to come off of Mars with something here. Ms. Chairman, to, to maybe not draw this out anymore, I would move we approve the ETC designation, adding, instructing our legal staff to insert in the order appropriate mechanisms for monitoring on a 60-day period, reviewable by the commission and the public utility staff, gigabit speed offerings and subscriptions and actual performance. And that would just be adding a paragraph authorizing, Mr. Hammond, to, to add that in concept to the order. I think that gets, A, it gets something out the door today, B, tries to address some of these concerns.
Commissioner, I would add to that, is no, no way to hear from Aristotle, I didn't turn around earlier.
I know.
If someone's listening, the commission, in this order, may want to explore that Aristotle would be requested to appear before the commission to make any kind of demonstrations that the
Correct.
Commission may see relevant, just to kind of put them on notice of that.
And again, I'm not trying to belabor this, I just, you know, again, we're going to be back here in September on all these certifications, one of which is pretty big, one of which is dealing with this exact type of technology, one's dealing with what everybody inside this bar knows are problems with that. We all have actual knowledge of that, and I am not, cannot support digging that hole deeper. And so I understand why we're here, I'm not trying to deny somebody in, in, Commissioner Bailey's district or three of the counties in mind, but I also don't want to make a bigger mess out of what's already a mess with some carriers, so.
Quick question, Chairman. Ms. Denmark, so based on the, the 30 census blocks and approximately 7,400 locations, is there a idea of how many is potentially would be served by fiber to the home, fiber to the premises versus a fixed wireless solution? Is there?
They're all fixed wireless for Aristotle.
Okay, not the way I.
Commissioner Bailey, I think I know where you're going with that, and that was one of the reasons I just said what I said about them coming and demonstrating. Their technology, as they describe it in their filing, does mention a fiber component. Now whether that is a fiber.
Multiple times it references fiber to the home.
Correct.
As.
Okay, well, then I was under the impression, I asked, I mean, I'm going to make this clear because I've talked about it for 20 minutes, I asked in an email this morning, what were the technology offerings? And the answer I got in the email was this was fixed wiring, wireless. I saw the same things in the order, but you can have a fixed wireless backbone to provide, excuse me, you can have a fiber backbone to then offer fixed wireless and the actual, the actual interface with the customer would be all fixed wireless, but everything behind that would be fiber.
That's the case here.
That's my understanding, yes, from their responses to their data requests.
So they're, they do have no fiber to the home?
They say that they are using a fixed wireless implementation to the house.
Saying in here they commit to a fiber-to-the-home network. That's kind of confusing to me when I, when I'm reading throughout the order.
I'm with you, I'm just.
I see fiber to the home mentioned.
I was understanding.
Multiple times in here, I was under the impression that there was sort of a hybrid delivery process, but I didn't know it was going to be 100% fixed wireless, that's the way I interpret it from reading the order this morning.
So it's, it's all.
Concerns are greatly growing in, as I hear.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm just.
Commissioner Presley.
My understanding from reading, I haven't seen the staff's data request, we've not been briefed on this by the staff, I've not seen anything about it until I asked the questions this morning about that. I got a copy of a proposed order, that's it. I don't know what's in the data request. My question, I, I was under the impression, and, and honestly, Ms. Denmark's email this morning confirmed that, just in my mind, that these were, this was a fixed wireless carrier with backbone of fiber that was using the fiber to then push a fixed wireless signal out. But you know, Mr. Wise is their attorney, he could have been here this morning and answered these questions, and he's not in the room. And, and so I don't know, you know, I, I don't know how close his office is, but I assume he could walk down here and drive if we wanted to sit here and wait, but is, is it fixed wireless or? I think that is the basic question, if there's a fiber to the home component.
Commissioner, I'm not, I'm not aware of the intricacies of the network that they have, I just know that from, from reading, I just pulled up their application, and it does seem to very, to be a very intricate network, and that's why I made the comment about as part of the motion that you made, there would be value in some kind of demonstration to appear before the commission to explain what that is to potentially alleviate some of the concerns that you addressed.
I, I tell you, is there any reason that the commission cannot grant an ETC designation with, lack of a better term, with a repealer in it? That it automatically repeals unless certain things are done between the next 60 days? Because what the position that we're in, sitting here, is that we've got a recommendation to approve this and we can't answer basic questions about what's in it, okay? That's number one. Number two is, the commission doesn't come back and meet until the 8th, it's the reason we're all here today. So what's going to be, what's going to be posited by some, if we deny this application, is we're trying to hurt the people in these six counties, which is a ball-faced lie. That's going to be the, that's what some will say. So, I mean, we're between the devil and Deep Blue Sea. We can't get, we don't basically know what, what we're saying here, and we're talking about, you know, six counties. I mean, I'm, I'm looking for answers as much as anything else. I mean, I made a motion that we condition the order with that, what do you feel, Mr. Hammond, is the best step to do to rectify these concerns?
I think the best step would be to do exactly what your motion was, to make a motion to approve directing commission, commission legal staff to put some consumer protection mechanisms in place that would address what we've been discussing. With potentially exploring the idea of a, an ETC designation being conditioned upon things at which if not met would result in a revocation of that ETC designation.
I tell you, I'm in my motion, or I strike that, and, and.
I, I, I think, I think you should withdraw your motion, Brandon, and then restate it.
Okay. My, my question is, let me ask this question.
I withdraw?
Yeah, I withdraw, I withdraw that motion, for the record, I withdraw that motion with its amendments. And my question to you, Mr. Hammond, is if the commission appointed a hearing officer in this case to deal with the fact that we've only got five, four days dealing with it, would the hearing officer, I know there's that 14-day period that an order then becomes the order of the commission, is that, if the hearing officer in a perfect world had all their concerns taken care of and the commission's concerns taken care of, could that, could that hearing officer at that time, does a 14-day period affect that June the 7th issue? You would have a recommended order that could be in place by June the 7th, but it's not the official order till 14 days. What's your position on that?
I may ask, definitely, so if it's a proceeding that would not have.
I'm trying to get it to where we can work, yeah.
It's an order, I, I think it would be, I think it would be okay. I mean, it would be the order, and it would turn the order, it would turn the order of the commission within, you know, the 15-day file, and that's what becomes the order of the full commission, but it's still an order. So I would say we, we have all the effect and force of any order.
So you're saying that if we move to move this and appoint Mr. Hammond as a hearing officer on Aristotle, then that order, if the concerns we've expressed today were handled and the hearing officer felt comfortable making a recommended order based upon whatever the hearing officer goes through in the next four days to approve or deny, you'd have to, that's a factual basis the hearing officer has to do, then if in fact the hearing officer found evidence that showed that it should be granted as an ETC, then at that point, that is entered, if they acted before June the 8th, June the 7th, then on or before June the 7th, then at that point, that order, they would be designated as an ETC, fully apprised of their abilities to participate in ARDOF?
That's correct, said order would be transmitted to USAC within the appropriate timeframe.
All right, in that case, Ms. Chairman, I withdraw my previous motion as stated, a move that we appoint Mr. Hammond as a hearing officer in case 2018 UA 224 Aristotle United Communications LLC for their ETC designation.
Is there a purpose within that?
Okay. Yeah, very good point, let me make that point. For the purpose of having more due process and, and inquiries on the record related to all the questions that were raised today, related to speed offerings, ability to actually deliver, what the basis of that network is, and, and to honestly, Commissioner Bailey, give four more days, or, you know, essentially two working days, but I assume Mr. Wise is getting paid over the weekend, to give four days, a period in which to get questions answered and things filed that would, would then give us an opportunity to look at that recommended order, which has, would, would, if possible, be filed by June the 7th, and if we don't, if, if a commissioner doesn't agree with the recommended order, the hearing officer could object and it come before the full commission. Honest to goodness, I'm just looking for a way to try to get these questions answered and not try to do this from the bench and have a procedure by which we're able to put something in a docket and crank some questions out and get that written back. That was the, honest to goodness.
Okay, so Ross, you, you got everything, uh, exactly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Bailey, do I have a second?
You got a second on Commissioner Presley's motion to amend, to refer this docket to Mr. Hammond?
To refer this docket to Mr. Hammond.
For further action.
Okay, all in favor signify a saying.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Ayes have it. Okay, so Ross, you got everything, is there any other questions or any other items that we need to discuss?
Uh, nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that said, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.